All right, we're going to call this meeting to order. It's 6:02 PM. We do have a quorum. I'd like to invite everybody to stand to your feet and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a time of meditation and prayer. All right, we're going to go with our vision or mission statement?
The Wimberley ISD vision statement: Empowering and inspiring all students to achieve their full potential. The Wimberley ISD mission statement: Wimberley ISD is dedicated to excellence in education, fosters a culture of kindness and respect, creates lifelong impact in their community. We believe that everything that we do should help ensure the success of all of our students. As educators, we maximize class time in an engaging and challenging way. Our teachers are personally invested in our students. Students in Wimberley are committed to community service, and the community supports students in return. A quality, public Wimberley ISD education drives the future of a successful Texas. As a district, we strive to meet the needs of the whole child academically, emotionally, and socially. Wimberley ISD provides the foundation to create engaged citizens who will become lifelong learners. All our children, parents, faculty, and staff should be treated with kindness and respect. We are committed to excellence in all we do. The Wimberley ISD goals: Achieve excellence in education; Foster a culture of kindness and respect; Create lifelong learners; Make a positive community impact.
All right, we're going to begin tonight's meeting with special recognition. You can see some students back there with some incredible state hoodies on. So, Mr. York?
Yes, I want to call forward Jason Valentine, principal, and we're going to recognize UIL academics. We've got some awesome, awesome individuals here to recognize.
Okay, well, thank you for having us. I will follow up with what Mr. Campbell said, and I want to introduce Coach Kenneth Augustus and have him come forward and introduce the state champion fall tennis team. And with him, he brought his assistant coaches, Coach Michael Kaufman. And assistant coach for the fall, Ramez Antun, who is also the teacher of the month at Wimberley High School.
Okay, when I call your name, come on up here. So this is the Wimberley Texans State Championship Team Tennis Team. Here we go. All right, so first up Peyton Anderson. Ava Armstrong. Sarah Cook. Cooper Dos. I don't think Drew Gonzalez could make it tonight, but he's included too. Nikki Casper. Leah Martin. Ryan Metcalf. John Moore. Maggie Moore. Tate Murphy couldn't be here tonight. Gwen Pierce. Amy Skaggs. Mac Ursia maybe is going to be here. We'll see. Max Westmoreland couldn't be here tonight. Nick Wright. Cade Yarborough. Okay, so we actually had a really awesome season. We dealt a little bit with some injuries throughout the season, but when we got to playoff time, we were about as close to healthy as we could possibly be. We ended up going through just one of the most ridiculous paths to the state tournament out of any team in recent memory. Had to battle back through Fredericksburg, who's a really tough district opponent, won a really close match 10-9 with Tulsa Midway, and then in the regional finals, got a rematch with Bernie, who had beaten us 16-3 earlier in the season, and were able to pull off an 11-5 win in the rematch. When we got to state, we played against a really solid Will's Point team and beat them 10-0, which was really cool for us. And then in the state final, played Argyle and won 10-7.
Congratulations. Thank you all very much for being here.
So Coach G, just stay up here, okay? So I'm going to get this wrong, but he is coach of the year?
TCTA, I believe.
Yes.
4A, Region 4, tennis coach of the year. That's correct.
Congratulations, Coach.
I don't think there's anything else we can say to try to embarrass you, but I would next like to introduce Ms. Kyler Brookshire DeLeon to introduce our state qualifiers in various forms of debate.
Hi, so I first want to begin with what we do. The speech and debate team starts competing as soon as school starts, so in September. We compete in three different circuits: the Texas Forensics Association, UIL, and the National Speech and Debate Association. With TFA, I have several state qualifiers. The TFA state meet is the largest, second-largest state, I'm sorry, second-largest speech and debate tournament in the entire nation. First, I'm going to begin with Alicia Becken. She is a TFA state qualifier in duet acting. Then we have Leila Cortucci. She is a TFA state qualifier in policy debate. Now we have Azula Hunter-Cham. She is a state qualifier in dramatic interpretation. She is very close to being a state qualifier in duo interpretation with her partner. We have three more meets, and I'm sure they're going to get there. Next, I have Kathryn McKinney. She is a TFA state qualifier in policy debate and a UIL state qualifier in Congress. Next, I have Charlie Warren. He is a UIL state qualifier in Congress. Josh Bober is not here today, but he qualified for TFA state in LD debate. Last but certainly not least, we have Jack Garrett. He is a state qualifier in UIL Congress, a TFA state qualifier in foreign extent, a TFA state qualifier in duet acting, and is just three points away from being a TFA state qualifier in humorous interpretation.
And one thing Ms. Brookshire DeLeon didn't mention about these students is they get involved with pretty extensive meet schedule that will sometimes leave at 5:00 AM and not get home until midnight, and there's a lot of sitting around, there's a lot of waiting patiently and impatiently, but they persevere and make it through their day, and it's always a success. So just like to introduce one more time the students I'll seek advice from but will not argue with, the WHS, the speech debate teams. I would next want to introduce Coach Lacey Lambert of our Wimberley High School cross-country
I'm going to have Madison Anderson come up here, our state qualifier in cross-country Madison is a sophomore, this is her second year competing at the state cross-country meet. She set a goal this year at the beginning of the year that this was, her season was going to end at the state cross-country meet, and she did everything from August 2nd to November 6th to make sure that happened. Her times got better every single week, and she hit her peak times around the district meet, is just what we're looking for, and really started dropping time that last month across country, and she ran her best time of the year at the state meet, finishing 41 out of 215, I believe. All right, running, I think, a 1214. 1238, two miles. So congratulations on Madison.
Did I miss anybody? No. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, students. Great to see you this evening. We'll go down to the public hearing on the 1920 District First Rating Report. So that's our CFO, Moises.
Well, let's continue on the good news. This is our first financial rating. As you all know, it's basically the district scorecard or report card on how well the district manages its financials. So for this report, the 2021, 2022, it's based on the 2021 school year. So the 1920 school years are about that. That's right there. So the purpose of this is to see how well the school district manages its financials. And I am proud to say that the school district continues its superior rating, and you all received the presentation ahead of time, so do you all have any questions on any of those slides? I do, however, want to turn your attention to a particular one right here. This is the statewide overall statistics. This basically tells you, for us, it tells us the impact of COVID. Right there on those numbers, last year in the 2018, 19 school year, that's the very beginning of the COVID pandemic. So as you can see right there, there was a total of 898 school districts rating a superior rating. Well, just a year ahead now, there was a drop of 42 school districts that were downgraded to an above standard, mid-standard, or a substandard shipment. From there, you can see the impact of those, how many students have been impacted by the pandemic. So due to other lost instruction, or they have left this school system to some other form of education system. But there has been almost half a million students impacted by this pandemic total. It's actually number 459,000. Mr. York, did you wanted to mention anything in particular on this slide?
I just, I'm very pleased that we have remained in the superior rating for many years, and given the pandemic, we're still superior rated, so I'm glad we're not one of those 42. Appreciate you and your office and the administrators who, we monitor our budget and every penny that goes in and out, so thank you.
Yes, I'd also like to thank all my staff that I work with. Without them, I won't be able to do my work, okay? And also with the advice from you all, the input that we received from you all the moment that we adopted budget. So it's very important to discuss a lot of those details that go into this. So I guess the following month, we do have some assumptions to discuss further on as we progress throughout the year, what the year looks forward like. That's basically our first rating, and we'll make an effort to continue on this, continue on this stream of achieving a successful or satisfactory rating in the coming years.
All right, thanks, sir.
Appreciate it, Moises.
We'll move on to public forum, and we'll play the directives for that at this time.
Do we have any?
Scratch that. All right. We don't have any participants for public forum tonight, so we'll wait on that recording until we do. How's that sound, Alan? Thank you. Let's go to our consent agenda.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion if we accept the consent agenda.
Yeah, I'd like to pull 5G.
I would be amiable to making my motion to, with the exception of 5G, that we accept the consent agenda.
All right. We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. It's all the way around. Dottie? And then on 5G, I thought it would be wise, since it is a public safety issue and a WISD issue on the extension of the contract or additionally the contract with Hayes County Constable. Constable Don Monogue is here. Sir, would you mind coming and kind of giving us an explanation of your take on what's happening here? You can speak directly into the microphone, and the folks that are going to listen to this on a recording will be able to hear you.
Thank you for having me this evening. I have been tested. I'm negative, but I'm very positive for our mountain cedar right now. I was appointed to the constable's office last year in August, and it was just before Blue Hole opened, and Mr. York and I have been working together on this quite some time. In fact, Mr. York and I have been working together for close to 25 years on different law enforcement issues. But we were able to meet over at Blue Hole and see the traffic plan and the way it was laid out, and it's just amazing. However, the first day was a bit of a challenge, but we got to talking about not only the contract that currently exists with just Jacob's Well, but about Blue Hole and some about the high school. And your attendance was limited during that period last year, but this year started off with a bang, and we've met two or three different times. But the contract that we have right now was executed, best I can tell from the records, in 2018 for a half of an officer to direct traffic at Jacob's Well. The county matched that with another half of officers to where we could, they could hire one full-time officer. Now, that's what we're working on there right now. What I proposed, what Mr. York and I have talked about many times, is adding another officer, which essentially would be one and a half officers, and then the county would still match one. We worked all last year at Blue Hole just under the Jacob's Well contract, but I think those of you that know me are not going to be hollering for a contract before I come to Blue Hole and start working. That's just not the way we do things. However, once we started having some real issues this year at Las Flores and Texan Drive and some of the traffic around the high school, we talked at length about that, and we've tested it somewhat, finally got with TexDOT, got all of these signal lights serviced and working the way they're supposed to. All of our officers and the sheriff's office officers have keys to those boxes. So what we started doing was working here at the high school when I had somebody extra I could put over here on the light, and it was amazing how he could clear the traffic in the mornings coming in, that it almost alleviated the problems at Texan Drive and Las Flores, because if you can imagine, there's two ways you can turn, and you've got two outlets wanting to go two different ways. So it was pretty much a mess, for lack of a better word, for a little while. So we have taken, not me, this contract is between the district and the county of Hayes, taken the contract that was with Jacob's Well, incorporated it into a new contract that the attorneys for the county did, which would give us, give me an opportunity to hire one more officer, which would be assured I could have somebody at the high school five days a week. Where we run into a little difficulty, in order to cover the schools early in the morning and cover them getting out in the afternoons, we have to work 10-hour days. So Mondays and Fridays are short, but with another officer, I could have three on Monday, three on Friday, and six Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. And I'm here to tell you, we just don't take two manpower, women-power officers. We empty that office in the morning, and we empty it in the afternoon to do our best to keep not only the kids, but the citizens, the buses, the teachers, everybody as safe as we can around these particular campuses that just, at one given time, there's a lot of population there. So that's kind of an overview of what I've recommended, what Mr. York and I have talked about, and I appreciate it, you pulling it off the agenda, consent agenda, because I really felt like it'd be good to go over this and explain where we are, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
I'm really grateful for you guys.
Thank you.
Well, it's been a great program. I helped start that program in Hayes County along with Dwayne and Ken and Jennifer Anderson at the time, and Constable Ayers. And Sheriff Monahue has continued that, his new role as constable in our community. I can think of few programs that have been as successful as that program's been and valuable to our school district, and think it's a wonderful partnership of leveraging taxpayers' dollars, getting high utilization out of their money, and the best use of jurisdictions working together. So thank you, Sheriff, for what you do and continuing to do this and doing it at a high level. It's very much, very much appreciated.
Thank you.
And Don, I definitely appreciate the fact that you helped me deal with the TexDOT issues that we had, and now we can control lights, and I can call you, and within seconds, you're back with me, and so I just appreciate everything that you and your officers have done, deputies have done, and I think that this is going to really enhance the safety, especially during those critical times of the school day. So thank you.
I appreciate that. I've enjoyed working with the district through the years.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Mr. President, with that, I'd like to make a motion that we accept consent agenda number 5G.
One second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? You need a minute? Okay, Dottie?
May I take it just a little bit farther, the process, once it's executed by the district, and I could pick that up tomorrow, Mr. York, maybe here at the, here at the office. I talked with the general counsel today. The commissioners' court does meet next Tuesday, and the commissioners' court will, this will be presented to them by our general counsel for the Hayes County. Once they vote on it, accept it, then I will be able to post it, but more than likely it's going to be after the first of the year, but I hope to have somebody in place shortly after school starts, and I'm just trying to give you a little bit of a timeline and what the governmental process is on that. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to say anything?
Yeah.
All right, next one is the agenda item that we need to discuss very brief is the athletic storage building update.
So, very brief. It is, we have finally got through all the site work, and we're beginning the project. That's about all I need to say.
What would a board meeting be without an update on the storage building? All right, so now we're going to move on to the reading academies. So a whole plethora of individuals are going to approach this, discuss this topic with us.
Yeah, so Sue Ann, if you would come forward. I noticed that, is Dara here yet?
Yeah.
Dara's here yet? So as I stated in my report, these reading academies have become, we were told that it might be a 60-hour training, it has become an 80 to a 100-hour training, and I'm just going to stop there and let them speak to exactly what that looks like for a teacher.
Okay, so I asked several, or I asked all my teachers if they wanted to submit a quote. Most of them have family obligations tonight, so couldn't come. So I have several. I just wanted to quickly read them. "Dray Porter: Reading Academy is a time-sensitive, content-heavy course that eats away at our time each week. There are 12 modules to complete with quizzes, essays, and videos to submit. I'm on Module 9, which states that it takes about nine hours to complete. This is no exaggeration and is over a full extra workday. Reading Academy takes up valuable family time on the weekends and evenings, as well as time I could be using to grade, prepare, and plan for my students." Melody Evers: Basically taking a 60-plus hour college course, there are 12 modules, and each module has anywhere from four to nine-plus chapters. Each chapter has many subchapters, and each module takes six to eight hours. There is no packet anywhere from 30 pages to over 100 pages. Module 8's packet had 110 pages. Knocking over the flag. And she said, "When I agreed to start the reading academy last June, I had no idea the time and energy it would take to complete this course. I'm only on Module 8, but it's difficult to find the extra time and motivation to complete the course between my teaching job and life at home. It's also frustrating as a teacher with over 20 years of experience, a master's degree in reading, a reading specialist certificate, a master reading teacher certificate, as well as working with identified dyslexic students on a daily basis using the Wilson Reading System to have to take this course when I'm using the majority of the information on a daily basis. By no means am I saying that I don't have room to grow or that I haven't learned anything, but very little of the content is new information, and it's presented in a very, in such an overwhelming and time-consuming way." Here's a quote, I have spent over 10 hours, this is from Tracy Biggers. "I've spent over 10 hours on just one module, and there are 12 in the entire reading academy. This is not something that can be completed at school. I have to, I have had to work on this in the evening and weekends just to stay on top of it." From Sarah Espinoza, "I would recommend that the board strongly..." From Sarah Espinoza, "I would recommend that the board strongly consider providing a stipend to support teachers who have committed to complete the Reading Academy. I am a huge proponent of quality professional development. I enjoy and appreciate opportunities to learn and grow as an educator. I would not normally see this kind of work as a burden, but this academy is truly burdenous in that it not only requires 60 hours of extra work on content that most of our teachers are well-versed in, but is also the kind of work that must be completed according to very precise instructions and in uninterrupted blocks of time." I have a teacher who is starting a PhD program. Well, I want to read this, she really did a good job with this. "As I begin my sixth year of teaching, I have never felt more overwhelmed. Although I love my job and look forward to coming to work every day, the reality of the expectations on teaching staff can be complicated to navigate. Teachers are responsible for monitoring student growth, addressing every grade-level teak, teaching manners, teaching to share, teaching working together, entering grades, staying late at school to set up rotations for tomorrow, grading papers late into the night, gathering information on any student who is below average, pushing students about average further, making learning fun, molding the lives of hundreds of individuals throughout the years. There are too many responsibilities to list. Anything that has been asked of us, we have done. When asked to leave school to teach from home, continue each child's education, make it fun and exciting and keep data, we did that. When we were asked to simultaneously, when we were asked to prepare three ways of learning, we did that. When asked to wear masks, clean surfaces, separate children six feet, stagger specials, teachers didn't bat an eye while continuing their work. The standards of what teachers are expected to accomplish grow every year. Once again, we are being asked to do something else and we are added to take on the Texas Reading Academy. It is filled with over 100 graded assignments, quizzes, papers, and projects. She has easily spent 60 hours so far this school year and she's only halfway done. She is a new PhD student, so she's going back to college to further her education, and she has spent more hours on the Reading Academy than a doctoral-level course. But at the end of this course, at the end of her PhD, she'll have a PhD. At the end of this, nothing's going to change. She will, she's not being compensated for her time, although we're trying to fix that. We do not get extra certification, we do not receive an additional title. So she asks that the WISD School Board consider their teachers and consider what is honestly being asked." And my, one of my biggest, of course, I'm having to take it also. I'm having to do it, and it's supposedly 42 hours for a principal. It's not. And I'm doing it at Thanksgiving, and I'm doing it now over Christmas break. It is not something I can do at school, and it's, it's just not. You have to have uninterrupted time. One of my biggest concerns is, I can't, I, my teachers are so stressed, I can't do for my school, I can't do professional development for my school that needs to be done because they're too stressed with this. They don't have, I mean, they're, they're full. They are full. And so there are things that we need to work on at Jacob's Well, but we can't do the work that we need to do as a team teacher, team of teachers, because this is taking precedent. And if I could do that, and I could do that during the school day, that's just part of what we do. We continue to learn every day when we're in those classrooms with those kids. But this is crazy and really takes a lot of personal time. So that's the Jacob's Well perspective.
Pretty much echo what Sue Anna just said. I think the timing that TEA brought this about was, was not very good timing after we've come off this COVID pandemic, and we're still kind of doing things to try to improve and close those gaps, because we have kids with lots of gaps after being homeschooled and try to do remote learning. And so, you know, it's taken a lot of our teachers' time. I brought a couple of my fantastic teachers here, and I'm going to let them kind of tell you how they felt about it.
Hi, everyone. I'm Jessica Guzman. I am a bilingual certified teacher, also with a master's degree. And I feel the same way about the Reading Academy. I love learning. I've written lots of grants for the school and for myself. I've slept on my friend's couch to go to a training for a weekend in Dallas. I mean, I've, I seek out learning as much as any other teacher does. But this course, in particular, as Sue Anna kind of mentioned, is something that, it just takes away from us. It takes away what little we have in our reserves after last year. And another thing, at Blue Hole or at Scudder, seven years ago that I know of, every single teacher at Jacob's Well and Scudder had to do a five-day training on phonemic awareness, phonics, our phonics program that has a lot to do with this. And then every year after that, we've done a refresher. So I'm very aware of the material. I know how to do this. And when I have to spend hours doing these tedious tasks, it's almost like, I don't know how to say this nicely, but it makes me feel like they think I don't know what I'm doing. I mean, I'm, I'm a highly qualified professional, and I've been doing this for a long time, and now I have to sit here and click through this program. And like Sue Anna said, last year for Columbus State, I went to South Padre Island, and this year, I spent the whole weekend on Texas Reading Academies because I don't have time during the week. I mean, I have kids, I'm a Girl Scout leader, my kids play four sports in Wimberly, I'm a volunteer in lots of different activities, and I value that, so I don't want to give up all the things that I want to complete this course for when, when I finish it and I am on track and I am doing everything that I'm supposed to do, I walk away with nothing. I mean, so we would really appreciate you guys considering a stipend just to make the teachers feel more valued, because COVID hasn't gone away for us. I mean, I still have students that I have to separate, I have to clean their tables every day, I have to make certain seating arrangements. We make, Ms. Merkorn made a website, and we keep up with our website, and we keep up with our packets just in case a student is quarantined. We don't want them to miss out on learning. So all of that stuff is still here, yet, you know, TEA decided to add this extra layer of extra hours that we certainly do not have. So we appreciate your consideration on that.
I want you to know, these two are PD junkies, they're professional development junkies and love to learn and beg to go to professional development. So when you're hearing from them, please know that. They are like the biggest PD junkies I know.
We are learning junkies.
So Ms. Merkorn, before you begin, for those of you in the audience that aren't aware, the Reading Academies are unfunded mandated by Texas Education Agency. So it's taken them three and a half years to develop the curriculum, and then they dumped this on us, and I'm being very blunt, I don't care, I'm being very blunt, TEA dumped this in our lap after COVID. And so this year, there's 28 teachers. Next year, there will be additional 20-some-odd teachers for K through, no, for three through five. And then there's, they're really wanting to add grade six.
No, it's K3 right now.
It's K3, they want to add four, five to this. So I'm just talking about K3. But this is mandated, unfunded, and it's just like they're saying, you're working on a PhD, most of our teachers have been trained in this same training, and yet it's mandated by TEA. It's very, very frustrating. This has nothing to do with what we're requiring them from Wimberly ISD. We know these teachers, we know how hard they work, we know the training that they've had. But it is such an insult to most that they are having to now take this Reading Academy whenever they already had this training, and I better shut up, so go ahead.
Hi, Ms. Merkorn, first grade. We're supposed to have it done by 2023, I believe, the Reading Academy. But as you've heard from everybody else, I think they've pretty much said a lot of what I'm going to say. But the Reading Academy is extremely time-consuming. It's very sad how much time it takes away from our weekends. We have families at home, just like you guys do. And the need, they need us, they need our attention, and this training is taking away from our personal lives, yet alone our time to find self-care. The amount of time that is suggested to get through each module is not a realistic time. It's, it's ridiculous. And I actually heard that the Reading Academy was not supposed to go out to us during the COVID year. Some other districts, the teachers had it during the COVID year, can you imagine? It didn't because there was too much on our plates, therefore, we're waiting for it, and now here's the year that has come upon us. However, our loads and our demands at work have not changed. We may be, we may not be doing recordings because of that COVID year, but we are very much still in the COVID year. Every day, I feel like I'm trying to inflate a flat tire, and it's taking a long time to air up. Therefore, preparation in the classroom is just as much COVID effects are going to be with us for many academic years to come. Additionally, the Reading Academy is repeated content to what we already know. We are very thankful to be working for a school district that is knowledgeable at how to, and how to teach students to read. That is one thing I can say about this program and looking into it, and I'm thankful that I've had that training and that heads-up. Going through the long hours is very much beating a dead horse, and it, it does not support what I need as a professional to refresh my knowledge and my professionalism. In fact, I just enrolled in a totally separate four-month-long program for focusing on dyslexia because that's going to better suit my needs, that's going to better suit my students than learning this phonics that we already know. All in all, the Reading Academy takes a large amount of time away from our home life. It is content that we're already familiar with. We're not out of the COVID effects yet, and as a professional, I need something more meaningful to put forth my professional development, like Sue Anna says, we're professional development junkies, for my future students.
Well, upon completion. Everyone who completes it by June, it will be in their June check.
In the interim, so we don't have this issue again, is there still anything else we can do to try and press the issue of having them test out? Just wanting to know the process, like, is there?
So.
Who would we contact?
Well, it's going to be TEA. And we never know if we're calling them at home in their pajamas or at the TEA offices. I'm just being honest, I'm being honest. I've got two or three other phone calls that have not been returned, so I felt like it was necessary for us to have, you know, to take some action on this and at least compensate them for some of their time at this point in time. Will these discussions continue? Yes, I think they will. I think that there are other districts similar to us that have these same concerns, and I'm talking to their superintendents. And we would love to have a one-on-one with the commissioner about this to, to at least suggest the fact that before a module, if they at least score a certain grade, you skip the module. I mean, that could, for most of our teachers, they could have done this in a week.
For those of you that spoke, if that was something that could happen, would that ease the pain?
And we hope that's not insulting.
I mean, but I, I mean, I know these two ladies have, and most of my teachers and I, I mean, I make nineties or hundreds on the free test. You have to go through, and you have to do, yeah. So. And then I make nineties or hundreds on the post, so that's why. Look at that show, bro.
Yeah.
Well, I don't want to sign any more work to anybody, but, and it sounds like y'all have already done the heavy lifting, but just, just document these things. And when we go into our next legislative session and create our agendas, we can certainly address these types of, address these types of issues, because it's, it's important to the quality of our education and the, the quality of life for our teachers. And I've found in my experience, that if you can document these things on the ground level, that lots of times, you can help modify it and move towards a better place. But, you know, from what we hear today and not being able to test out, some of the other issues involved, that just, it's not surprising, but it's just something that we can follow up on in our next legislative session. So thank you all for what you do, appreciate it.
Ken, you made that motion. I wonder if the, the board would, and I second if I will, I wonder if the board would consider a, a bigger stipend for those teachers that completed that?
I would agree. I mean, if it's 100 hours and we're giving $500.
Yeah, that's kind of insulting.
It is. Five bucks an hour.
Well, I would like it, but I'd have to visit with my friend Moise S over there, because we just don't have unlimited money to pass out, so.
Yeah.
I mean, I'd like to give them a million dollars each, every teacher, no question asked.
We said how many we're going through it, and this?
We're looking at 20 teachers.
20, right now?
10,000, 15,000, about 1,000 in benefits.
So we started at 300, because a lot of school districts were given three. Then I found out they were given five. Yes, just like any other stipend. None of the stipends that we have, I'll be frank with you, really compensate for this. This is an academic stipend, and it's something that I think that, I looked at the 750 amount, and I did look at the 1,000 amount. And the 1,000 brought us to 22,500. I think we'd have to repeat that next year if, I mean, I would recommend a $1,000 stipend for the, for Reading Academies, just given what I've heard, really, since day one of school. I mean, it's been overwhelming, but my faculty advisory comes to me every single time we meet, and that, that's not even on the agenda, they make it part of the agenda, which, that's what that committee's all about.
So if you consider a $1,000 stipend acceptable, and even more, and we have, we have, plus our revenue, so.
Well, if a $1,000 is doable, I would love to amend my motion and make it $1,000 upon completion.
I second that.
Absolutely.
Oh, it's my second, so I have to.
All right, we have a motion and a second on that, $1,000, the stipend for those.
I want to ask a question, Rob, before we vote.
Yep.
So by doing these stipends, is this going to have a, an effect on other types of employees and trickle into other things? In other words, by us doing this, I think we've given like $500 stipends before, and I just want to make sure there's not a domino effect here, and if so, I'm sure it's justified, but that we can afford it, that, you know, whoever we gave, I don't recall specifically off the top of my head, whoever we gave the last $500 stipend to is not like, well, I want $1,000.
And so every year, we look at these stipends, Will. And so as of what you, what we presented to you last time, we did do that because exactly what you said happens. It becomes a domino effect. And so anytime that you add a stipend or increase a stipend during a school year, that's what you do, you know, that's, that's kind of what you have to deal with.
You see this to be an isolated event, particular to the state's request and requirement for teachers in that certain grade level, right?
Yes, sir.
What is, what is our criteria for paying stipends?
Okay, the criteria for all stipends is time spent outside of the contract day. So they receive compensation for their contracted day. And so stipends become, you know, an additional degree. know, an additional degree in some cases, but in most cases, it's hours spent outside of the day, which teachers could receive a stipend just for, you know, grading homework and all the things that they do. But this has been an added burden that goes above and beyond anything academically that we have been mandated just all of a sudden. And so, I think that's why districts are struggling in the surrounding hour, I mean, in the surrounding area. Once they find out that we're fixing to approve a thousand dollars, their teachers will be at other board meetings, I promise you.
All right.
That was the point I was trying to make, and wanted to make sure that that's, that's covered, because I don't, I don't want us to get into picking, you know, winners and losers of time spent, it's all hard-earned time spent, and just want to make sure it's balanced, we can touch all those people, and that it's affordable for our district.
Hardy discussion, thank you very much. We have a mo, we have a motion, we have a second discussion. All right. All in favor? All right, that's across the board, Donnie. Sorry, Dee Howard is up for the District of Innovation update. Greetings, Dee.
Yes. Back in 2016, our district applied for a District of Innovation for a five-year period, so we have been following a District of Innovation for 2017, and it will expire this spring in 2022. The state gives us the option of just discontinuing the plan, or we can begin a new one, or renew what we have. We are choosing to renew most all of the innovations that we requested the first go-around, and we've added just a little bit, and I highlighted those and also put the appropriate policies that went along with it, because back when we did our District of Innovation in 2017, we got with TASB, and we updated all of the district policies that were impacted by the District of Innovation that we put in place. And so, I could go through each and every one of these with you, but you probably have already looked at them. I'll just briefly touch on school calendar, we like starting earlier in August, that has proven effective and good for us, and we can get out before the end of May, so we would like to continue that, that is in our policy now. Our class size ratios, the 22 to 1, when we first did this back in 2017, it was for kindergarten through fourth grade, it is now going to be pre-K, because the law changed to pre-K and the ratios that we have there, so that's the only little tweak that we're doing to that piece. We, the next one that we had is going to be the Behavior Coordinator. Texas Education Code says that each campus has to have a Behavior Coordinator, oftentimes that falls to the Assistant Principals, because they're the ones in charge of the Behavior Management on the campus. However, we here in Wimberly ISD like to do things oftentimes as a team, we like to include the counselors, sometimes the principals, the teachers, and so, that's the reason why we came off of just a one-person Behavior Coordinator assignment and, and are able to share those responsibilities and utilize teamwork for that piece right there. Then teacher contracts, probationary contracts, when a person moves into the district, the law states that they can come in as a probationary contract, and then after the first year, be taken off of the probationary contract. There have been times where it was necessary to give, give a teacher an additional year of growth while they were here with us, and so, we are enjoying the possibility of keeping a teacher on a probationary contract if necessary, just to help them with their growth plan, help them in the classroom. We're not going to keep teachers that are not good for kids, if they need to be dismissed after the end of a probationary year, we will do that. But there have been some cases, very few, but some cases, where it's been good to be able to extend that probationary period for another school year. And so, we have that in our policy, and we'd like to continue to do that. The district transfer policy has been updated just a little bit, because we put additional verbiage in, and we can make sure that our policy is in line if we need to do any tweaking, we will have the TASB review this, but we wanted to add these elements from what we currently have. We wanted to put in, students will be held to high expectations for appropriate behavior and conduct on campuses, of course, that is in the contract, but we just want to reiterate that. We also want to say that parents will be held to high expectations for appropriate behavior when interacting with school personnel on and off campus, phone and email, and that students will meet the 90% attendance requirement, and then if there are two or more disciplinary incidents, a campus administrator can review those details and determine the status of the transfer. And if a student receives a DAEP assignment, the transfer will be immediately revoked. The final piece, and this is something that is new, we've had very few, but sometimes we do have students who want to test out of a grade level when they're kindergarten through fifth grade, and they have to take a test in each and every core subject area and score at least, well, now the law has put that back down to 80%, it has been 90 for, for quite some time, but 90% in order to go, to pass that. Any child that, or student that wants to do this in kindergarten through fifth grade has to pass, pass the math, reading, science, and social studies. And in sixth grade and beyond, you can get subject, course credit for taking the test and doing 90% or better. And so, what we are proposing is that we be able to keep the percent passing rate to 90 without prior instruction, and this just goes along with the higher standards that we have here in Wimberly ISD. So, that is the new proposal that we have on our DOI. And I know I went through all of those little pieces quickly, but I know that you had this for a week and have had the opportunity to look at it. I have a cleaned-up version that will be posted to the website, Alan is getting a link. Tomorrow, I will send something to the commissioner that says that you guys have reviewed this, and we are in a review process until January the 24th, when I come back to you, and if there are no questions and you are ready to approve it, we can approve the DOI at that time, and then the commissioner will receive a second email from me stating that you, as a school board, have accepted the District of Innovation, and currently, we're asking for that for 2022 through 2027. You, as a board, can come back at any point and change, amend, add, delete, whatever, but it, currently, as it stands, what we want to propose is for five years.
So, given the timeline, Dee
Yes.
Do we need a motion tonight? We need the motion in January?
Yes, sir, that is correct. This is a review, and I will say that we took this to the Faculty Advisory Committee, two different sittings here in the last couple of months. We also, with our Campus and District Improvement Committees, have reviewed this, so I just wanted to let you know that it has gone through several committees and review and review with the principals.
Okay, so just one more time, we don't need a motion tonight but we do need a motion in January.
That is correct.
Okay, that's the
Yes, this is simply a review.
Thank you, Dee, as usually, very succinct report from you, I appreciate that. Any questions or comments from trustees?
Yeah, I have just one comment, Mrs. Howard. Anytime I see the, the student, the teacher ratio fluctuate
Yes.
It kind of raises a flag, and I understand that's just going to, that's never going to go away, and we don't have to talk about it now, but maybe I can email you offline, I'm interested to see how, how we balance that, right? We, you know, the school buildings have a finite amount of classrooms attendance and enrollment, I'm sure is a, is a constantly moving target, so if, if, you know, one year, let's say we're at 105, 110% capacity, 175% capacity, if TEA keeps mandating stuff, right? I mean, how do we, how do we balance that? How have we done that in the past, and what's our plan for dealing with that going forward? That's a lot, so I'll shoot you an email, unless you guys want to talk about it now, but I figure, yeah.
And I think we'll, we'll answer many of those questions during the budgetary process.
Yes, yes.
Thanks for entertaining the new guy.
All right. We will press on to the scoreboard, I think Jeff and Dusty are with us again this evening, is that correct?
So, Dusty, Jeff, whoever is
Whoever wants to come up front, yeah. Trustees, are you guys good? Hanging there? Okay. We need to take a break, we need to.
I'm actually here to represent all the Reading Academy widows, because I am one. My wife's a first-grade teacher, I know that all well, so, just kidding. So, we have a presentation, basically, just kind of follow-up. We, we've done some due diligence up to this point, so we brought out an electrical service company, met with the facility care team here, did a full-blown finding out what's worst-case scenario, so tonight, we kind of have a presentation, you know, to give you, showing you the numbers that would be worst-case. We're still working with some of your local companies to hopefully get that price better, but we wanted to make sure that we had worst-case scenario to present to you. There is some additional work that has to be done, we have to do a step-down transformer. The transformer that was put in for the original stadium lights was already pretty old and antiquated, so we're having to upgrade that, we have some boring that we have to do from power to the board and from the board to, also to the fiber side of things. So, numbers and presentation that we give you tonight is everything included. Also, just to be clear, we talked to Moses this afternoon about this, and some is, we are not charging for the sports marketing coaching for Wimberly, we believe that you have a community that will be very supportive of this, and so, that's not a charge that we put in there, it's just something that we're going to do, that's inside of that, especially knowing what the electrical's costing, and go inside that, as we know, all costs are going up, so, you know, we wanted to be able to show that to you, and so, you know, we have the final number that's in there for you, I'm sure you're all looking at it, and you can see that, that's inside of there.
So, they have this document, guys, and Dusty, why don't you take this and make sure that the document that they have is what you're presenting, if it is changed, let them know. We were dealing with, is it Altech or
Alterman.
Alterman.
Alterman for electrical, and you're reviewing, you know, a bid through Olson, Wimberly, and even your other guy.
Right, so where I'm at is, I spoke to Ernest Olson from Olson Electric, and he was fortunately on vacation, and he'll be back this week, and so, the plan is that at some point this week, he's going to get a chance to come over and review the actual site and make sure that he has exact plans. We gave him all the specs and call-outs that we had given the other companies as well, Wimberly Electric will be doing the same thing, as well as Red Grizzly, and then I also reached out to a previous vendor that I had used in McGregor, and they were more than welcome to come down and, and do the same thing and walk through that, and this is a worst-case scenario, and I highly anticipate that as we move forward, we're going to get multiple bids, they're going to be much more friendly to the budget than this was, but again, the, the one that I'm, I'm referencing here of Alterman, this is a company that we've used down in Laverne, they're reputable and they've done a great job, so wanted to make sure that we had a solid number to work from.
So, so basically, we're looking at, the government capital numbers have changed a little bit, from the conversation we had, wanted to be completely turnkey, so everything that would run through us, just to be completely transparent, that is Alterman's number, that is not markup from VCR Now that's inside of there, so we're giving you a number based on what electrical's bid to us, so in most cases, we would have a GC number that's added to that, we have not done that to try to make that more palatable of a number. So, the current number that you have is an older number that does not include Alterman in that, and, and so, the new number with Alterman, just so you know what you're looking at, we have three numbers, the LED system is 362,272.79, the audio system is 70,631.38, and Alterman Electric is 127,098.73, making a total of 560 and 2.90. So, as Dusty stated, we believe that Alterman number is going to be much better, but again, we wanted to present worst-case scenario, we'd rather show you worst-case and then hopefully be able to blow that budget out in the end. So, that's what those numbers are. The issue comes into play is, is what the board's choice is, whether you would pursue government capital, if it'd be something directly out of M&amp;O. Basically, altogether, if we did government capital, the entire amount would be financed, and that would be what we need to raise. So, just kind of understanding those things, that, that we feel comfortable now, knowing that worst-case scenario, that is the final number, and we do believe that we can do better on that final number, especially using local vendors. This was a company that's based out of Austin, very reputable, does a great job, but we feel like local's going to come in at a better price. The other deal is, you do have a challenge, because we do have a lot of rock, and so, boring and doing things is challenging, we hope that most of it, running around the stadium's built up, but again, we have to plan for worst-case scenario. The nice thing for us on the, on the scoreboard itself, we're only going to be digging one hole, but the boring, we've got some long runs to get, we have to get under the home side, all the way to the new board, we have to get from the new board all the way up to the press box, and there is no, there was a path at one time, but when the field was upgraded, it was, it was destroyed, and so, we can't use that. We actually had Alterman come out and spend a day out, they ran wire through, you know, fished it, ran cameras through, and that's when we found out there was no accessible point, and so, it's not a guess at this point, we actually know. So, they, they spent a day, we're taking care of that, and so, the picture is what it is at this point, so we know, and those are the hard numbers. Questions?
So, we're, we're tackling this in two parts, first, the contract, and then the method of payment, so we can center our comments and our questions right now on the actual contract, and then we'll go on if necessary, okay? Any questions at all?
I'd ask if Moises has an opinion on how we go about paying for all this.
Moises, if, Moises, have you used that microphone for our recording, that'd be outstanding, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yes, they did.
So, this sheet that I summarized here puts all three, all four proposals in, in summary. So, we have three or four ways to finance this. The first one is the three-year, the government capital is proposing. If we finance a total of 568,000, we would be paying in interest about 31,165, so the net project cost would be 591,000. That would be the savings if the district were to pay it off on fund balance. Now, if you finance for five years at a rate of 2.6, and the true rate of 2.6, you would be paying a total of 47,000 in interest. So, that's your total finance amount of 568,000 plus 47,000. 47,000 would be your savings if you were to pay this out of fund balance.
And is there any prepayment penalty, or are we committed to the timeline?
My understanding is that there's no.
And what does this mean to our fund balance, in your opinion, Moises, if we were to pay cash?
If we were to pay this in cash
I've got it right here.
You have it right there?
Yes. So, our audited fund balance as of physical year 2021 is 8.972 million, which is a, yes, that's our audited number for 2021. which is a, yes, that's our audited number for 2021. And that's for a five-month operational, that's five months of operation.
Yeah. Okay. So those are three ways that you can finance this. Now, the other way is that if you want to do half and half or split, leverage the capital structure. If you want to do, pay half of this out of fund balance and finance the rest, you would still be saving at least 15,000, 15,000 if you were to finance half of the total amount. At this point, as Mr. York said, our total fund balance is 8.9 million. That's more than five months in operating expenses. So you do have enough in there to be able to finance out of the M&amp;O.
And if we took it out of fund balance, we would pass like a, a funding resolution in which we can restore that balance back?
Yes.
Is that how you would recommend doing that, Moises?
Yes, so that any revenue that comes in, and as soon as this project goes into play, all of those funds are segregated from the activity where this is going to be happening and moved right into operations so that we can recover that cost.
Okay. That was a question I had, is, once we start seeing income, we can put that back and start paying back towards this, back into?
We'd have to pass a resolution to that degree, but yeah, you could.
And the resolution has to clarify if any of the amounts received or revenue earned after this project goes active, if any of those revenues are going to go full 100% into the general fund or part of it into the athletic program. But if you want to recoup everything upfront, just make it 100% all into the M&amp;O.
Okay.
That way it's clear, it's clear for athletics.
So would that, would that have a timeline on it? So we could say, once we reach that payback, then all that money can go into the athletic fund?
It's up to you. If you want to, if you want to reimburse yourself in a period of four, three years, it depends on how much revenue you earn.
Okay.
I think what he's asking, though, is that we want to make sure that this resolution states very firmly that all proceeds will pay off whatever we paid for the school board. Then, once that occurs, then the second phase of the resolution takes into account whatever the board deems, you know, would be where these additional funds would go. Because then that would be revenue to us.
Yes.
And not revenue to pay.
Right, yeah.
The scoreboard.
Correct. And somewhere in there, I'm sorry.
Can we just hear from Doug, what you think, what would you like to see us do with that?
Well, first, first thing. First thing is, is a matter at hand would be to get everything paid off. So if it's, you know, $550,000 or whatever, then, then, you know, then we go to work and we, we raise that money. And if that's in two years, that's two years. And if it's in, you know, if that's five years, it's five years. I think it's going to be closer to the two than it will be to the five. So once we get it paid off, then as that money comes in, you know, as the athletic director, I'd like to see it, you know, be allocated to athletics, but to fund some, some projects that, that we don't have to come to you guys and ask for. You know, like I talked to you about a project that, that we're looking at, adding baseball, adding lights to the batting cages at the baseball facility right now, which is going to run us right roughly between 15 and 20,000 dollars. And so, instead of, you know, coming to you guys and say, hey, you know, we're looking at this, or we want to, you know, we want to upgrade the dugouts up there, or what, you know, whatever it is, we need some new things in the gymnasium, new bleachers on one side. Just, just things like that, that are big-ticket items. But I do think it's something that, that, you know, that money that starts to come in then, you know, there needs to be some guidelines that set down. And that's something I think that me and Mr. York or the new superintendent at that time sits down and is able to go through those and, and kind of set some parameters for those. Because it's kind of like, since it's uncharted territory for us, basically, with, with being able to raise what I think is going to be some, some really nice funds for that. The other thing, too, is you look at, you know, it, it could be, we could look at our budget, you know, as we come in, and we could, okay, if we're bringing in 100,000 a year, then let's slash the athletic budget by 100,000 and, and use that money to fund the athletic budget, something along those lines, or, you know, that's just another thing. Just talking to coaches that have done this, athletic directors that have these systems in place and kind of what they do to theirs, and those are some of the things that they have, they have done with those.
Okay. So, Moises, in regards to how the board determined how to pay for this today, if the board wanted to go forward, we would give our superintendent direction and the company here clarity that we are moving forward in a certain fashion? And then you would write up a reimbursement resolution for our January meeting? I didn't see anything like that in, in our document.
The resolution would have to be run by the attorney, I would think so. That way, in the event revenues are not collected in a particular year, the resolution specifies what is it that we're going to do in that case. You also have to consider maintenance costs. That's another thing that I was thinking, since this is a pretty costly equipment. You might want to set some funds aside for capital maintenance on this. I'm not sure what's the guarantee on this, a 10-year. So there's a 10-year guarantees in this, it's something we're to file.
And if we were to finance this out of our reserves, I wouldn't believe there'd be any issue to our bond ratings or any type of financial standing to the district.
No, there's no, it doesn't affect your rating, although you have to report it because it's A-lease. We would have to record it as part of our bond debt, or not bond, but district total indebtedness.
Okay. Thank you.
So one issue that I want to address, we have a timing issue on material, especially steel, and I think you said LED. And so I've already spoken with our attorney regarding a resolution such as this. We could have that drafted within a day. So the resolution will not be an issue. You guys need to tell us timing on, you know, saying that this is the drop-dead, you know, financing for this, given steel increases. Can you allude to that?
Yeah, sure. Basically, right now, what we're telling all of our clients and potential clients is, is that any deal that's closed before the end of the year, we can guarantee the price. What we have to do at this moment is, we have to immediately order. Steel is, you know, 12, 16 weeks out. The minute we place order, it locks the price in. And so then they start building and they start going. If we wait, what happens to us? And this isn't, you know, a panic moment, try to put you in, it's just the reality of the situation because of where things are. We used to be four to eight weeks to be able to turn things. We're now 12 to 16 weeks. And that's just the reality of where we live. I could tell you, you know, enjoyable stories that aren't that enjoyable about, you know, I have LED products sitting on boats right now trying to get here and things of that nature. And literally, it's first come, first served. You pay and you're here. So what we, what we're saying out loud is, is as soon as you can get contracts negotiated, payments made, we can lock in things. We know, and we've been told by all three of our steel distributors, that come January 2nd, prices are going up again. And it's just consistently across the board. Shipping has gone up six times in the last four months and continues to climb. And so we just want to lock this price in. So the sooner we're able to do that, Mr. York, the more that helps you and helps us. And we're not trying to make it a panic moment, it's just the reality. Anybody that's bought something right now knows. And so we're not talking about something that goes, gets picked up off the shelf. It, the order gets placed, it's a local, you know, we use Alamo Steel for most of our stuff that's here, local in San Antonio area. So they immediately lock the price in, buy the steel and start moving. So that helps us and it gets in. And so if we wait, that changes. And it's not one of those things where, you know, VCR Now can eat, you know, a 20% upgrade on costs. So we would want to do our best to get this done as soon as possible. So.
I have a question. In, in the unlikely event that the costs go down, how does that work? Does the price remain fixed?
We, we'd love to pass that on to you. I have not seen that yet since COVID. But I would love to be able to see that. And if that happened, we would pass that on. I will tell you the same thing on the electrical. If we come in at a lower bid, we're going to make sure to do our best to, that you get the benefit of that. So we're hoping, again, that the, the local companies help us come in at a better price.
Thank you.
So again, because that's just a pass-through cost, you know, that's pretty unheard of. We just, as we told you before, our goal is to sell LED. We're not an electrical company. So we're, we're not, we're not trying to mark those things up and go, we're trying to make it as easy as possible. It just, we're creating one source and one source of coordination, so they would work under our contract.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve the VCR Now contract with a payment method to be withdrawn from our reserves with an attached resolution approved by the board coming at a later date of 500, I'm sorry, y'all can't breathe through my nose.
Why don't you do not to exceed that? Comes down lower, we're good to go.
No, thank you, Ken. Not to exceed.
My second.
I do have a question, I'm sure other trustees may. Trustees, you have questions at all? Sir? What, what did you say, Rob, any questions? So, I, I think I know the answer, but I'm hoping I get a different answer from you, okay? In the timeline of this thing, I guess there's no way to say, yes, we're going to approve this contract, yes, we're going to take it out of general fund. And we have the pledges committed before we put the scoreboard in the ground.
Yeah, the, the issue is the timing of the district, you as trustees and us working on setting up events and getting those done. I don't know that we can get that done in a timely fashion with both of those and then not have the issue of being into next year. I, you know, from our experience and conversations, we've been in much smaller communities, which less, far less community support for the school districts, and got this done before we ever put it in the ground. And that's happened on numerous occasions. We do not feel like in Wimberly that we're going to have a difficult time raising funds.
All right, so what would be, if we approved the contract tonight, then what would be your target date for putting it in the ground?
Would probably be April, March or April would be our goal.
And those events would take place between, say, January?
January, February, March, the sooner the better. You know, again, because of the way companies do their budgets, the quicker we can get into January, the less that they've spent their money for next year's budget.
And in past projects, how many months did those events take you to?
Some of those were done in one event.
One event?
One event they did. I just give you a prime example, McGregor, all of it was done in one lunch. And last week, we actually had another donor turn around and write full-blown checks for softball and baseball. So that's kind of the way it works. It becomes a first-come, first-served. So we invite everybody relationally between us and you and the community, and we give everybody first serve. You know, and then we're also going to have, down the road, you know, give an opportunity for those that can't do big stuff to still have an opportunity to advertise.
Yeah, that's very important.
But we're going after kind of like an Elite Four, Elite Eight in the beginning to really knock the, the major costs out. And it's surprising, sometimes we have people not go out two and three, four or five years on payments, they go, we'd rather just pay our part and move on. So we have that, it just depends, again, on the client and how their budget works.
I appreciate your candor on that. And, you know, historically, the board has, Ken can talk to this better than I can, but historically, the board has, Mr. York, of course, lean, we lean heavily toward a, a local, local vendor. It's not a surprise to you.
Right.
And so we would, we would encourage you to, to, to step in that way if we, if we can.
That is our desire. That's what we're pushing for.
And so right now, we just have a motion that we're going to approve, approve the contract from Will, seconded by Andrea. Anything else? And part of that motion was the way we would fund the, part of that motion, Rob, was how we would fund the, the asset. And I was making a motion to take that out of reserves and to not finance it. I would add to your comment about the timeline, which was important. I think a big selling point for, in the administration and for this board also was the student involvement and the, the skill sets that they can learn going through these things. If these gentlemen get the, get the asset in the ground in April, we want to obviously be prepared for the beginning of the fall. We're going to need time, and our teachers and our administration and working with others, train those kids and, and get them on the right track so that they're ready to go throughout the summer and moving into the fall as well.
Go ahead, Nick.
Yeah, I appreciate you guys, and this is your third trip out. And we appreciate your due diligence. It sounds like you spent some time out here on your own, on your own time and dime, so we appreciate that. And did I hear correctly, because I know, I think it was your very first time out, you were discussing how there's a coaching aspect of, of, of your business that, that you work with the districts? And I just, did I not hear you say that you're going to eat that $10,000 just now?
Tonight, we've agreed to do that. So we'll be working with Coach and Dusty will be doing a lot of, a lot of coaching back and forth. And so we will also be part of your events and be doing your presentation as well. So it will be part of, and with Coach and us doing the presentation. And we will also be making your sports marketing decks, the things that will have our Elite Four in them. And then we, we also create a video with your earbook team to kind of work it out so people get to see the vision of what could be. And so we'll do that as part of that. And so that's just something for us, we feel like that this is not going to be a difficult community to raise sports marketing dollars in. And so we're willing to take that risk and say, let's go for it.
Not if Coach keeps winning. Dwayne?
Yeah.
Now, hey, I don't think this is going to put the brakes on anything, but I'm just curious, have we, have we discussed, I know you have your prime spots on the board, I'm, I'm, I'm up to, up to speed on that, but have we talked about what those slots cost?
Yeah, that will be a working relationship between us, you and Coach. So we'll probably have some additional conversations and meetings about that. And so we have some general ideas of what we think the community can support, but it will be a decision we make together. And so we don't want to lowball. Those four Elite to start with, so those will be a little higher than normal. And then we'll kind of work our way, because we're going to allow people the opportunity to say, hey, I'm real close to that, what if I did this? We also want them to make sure that everything's digital. There's also the speaker box that's a prime location that's going to be on there all the time. That's one of those spots that we're not going to easily give up, you know, because it's prime and it's on all the time. So those are discussions that we'll have with potential marketing vendors. And so that's a negotiation. Nothing gets done without your approval and Coach's approval. So everything gets brought to you, and you get to make the final decision on who is or who isn't. There's just some, some vendors we're not going to go after because it doesn't represent Wimberly well. So we, you will get a final approval on all of that.
Dwayne?
I'd, go ahead. I'd just like a clarity. That thing's really loud. That when we say reserves, we really mean fund balance, correct?
M&amp;O, fund balance.
M&amp;O, fund balance, okay. Just to clarify that. Also, just to say that sometimes when you have debt, your community's a little more persuaded to help you out. So I don't want to really harp on the fact that we're going to pay for this out of fund balance and then hope to get reimbursed for that. So if we could not make that part of our presentation, that we just need this money to pay this off, I would appreciate that.
Sports marketing is going to pay for this board. That's what we need to be saying.
There you go. I like it. All right.
Dwayne, as far as the technical and the, the educational aspect of this, who, who's going to be in charge of leading that effort for our district?
So we have, oh my gosh, now my, the name has gone blank, but we have Greg Idalowicz, who has been waiting and waiting and waiting for this opportunity. And so we have, we have a whole host of kids. But this little kid sitting back here by the name of Jordan Wink.
Yep.
He is so excited about this. He's probably going to do just as much training on this, along with Alan Brugman. I mean, these two guys are pretty giddy about this whole process and how, how much you're going to get to spend with kids and become teachers and, yeah, I, I'm very excited to see what, yeah. And our kids are excited. The kids kind of know that we're looking into this. And so I've had a couple of conversations with those kids, and they're like, oh, this could be awesome.
Well, I, I have too. And, and I'm just glad that everybody's understanding that the importance of that aspect and how it's a big part of, at least my support of this, of this program.
Yeah.
Is that benefit. Thank you, Dwayne. Thank you, Dwayne.
And I'd really like to try and involve some of the kids in the fundraising aspects of it and learn about sales and marketing as well, because that's where I come from and tons of value there. And I would love to see how we can get kids involved in learning how all that works in the real world.
Perfect. I think you just signed up to do a lot of extra work tonight.
I'm happy to do it.
All right, we have a motion and we have a second. All in favor? Six-oh, Dottie. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Look forward to our future conversations with you. Next, the giant, genuine item is face-to-face first Tuesdays. We'll cover this very quickly before we move to you, Moises. I think you need to address the next one, the HVAC, or no? Okay. So face-to-face first Tuesdays is a new initiative that Dwayne and I will be involved in and any other trustee that would like to attend. And in essence, what it is, is what it says. The first Tuesday of every month, beginning the month of February of the new year, Dwayne and I will be present. I'll be facilitating for any member of the community to come in and to discuss topics that are affiliated with WISD, WISD-centric. And we invite, you know, other trustees to be there as well. We just can't go over that magic number three. And so we'll probably have Dottie relegate all that. But we would really encourage the community, teachers, parents, students, to, to show out and, and keep the interaction and the dialogue going in that fashion. So that's face-to-face first Tuesdays. Any questions for the trustees on that at all?
No questions, but thank you for doing that. I think it's going to be a really great added benefit for the community to, for us to connect more regularly with them in a two-way dialogue. So thank you for doing that.
All right. Moises, it says here you need to do something on HVAC. Do you want to do that?
You all need to approve it. I'll just present. But this is, addresses the air quality. And what we did here is we put out an RFP for HVAC and AC upgrades at high school. A total cost of this is 72,000, so that's above the 50,000 threshold. Plus, this is going to get funded out of Acer funding, not local MNO. So I just need your approval on this. We only received one, one proposal from Extreme Air, and it came out to 72,351.
So I noticed that. So we did put it out for bid, but only one came.
Only one came.
Okay.
I'd make that motion.
Motion and second. All in favor? Six-oh, Dottie.
Thank you.
I would just, I just want to make sure that we're comfortable with how we're going through these procurement processes. In other words, we touching enough people? If we're not getting bids back, we maybe need to take a deeper dive into that.
But I reached, there was a company that was interested, and I reached out to them at the beginning, and as we near the end, and they still hit. Other districts are adopting a system where it's an online system where all the vendors go and do that system, but we pay membership, we're paying annual membership just to get more people involved, vendors involved, not only in the surrounding areas, but expand to state or even beyond state.
All right, anything on the health and safety report or school resource officer at all? Good to go? All right, Moises, you're back up, my friend. CFO report, you have anything else?
Unless you all have any questions.
Any questions on the financial report? You're getting off easy tonight. All right, very good. We want to roll that, Alan, on closed session? Got that?
Closed session. The board may adjourn into closed session pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.071. The board may then re-enter into open session for further discussion and necessary action. Deliberation in closed session may include security devices or security audits, Texas Government Code 551.076 and 551.089. Personnel matters, Texas Government Code 551.074. New hires, terminations, employee discipline. Deliberation regarding real property, Texas Government Code 551.072. Or consultation with attorney, Texas Government Code 551.071.
Okay. Board, let's take about five minutes and we'll adjourn at this time for closed session at 7:43 PM. Motion, the time is 8:24. Do we have any business to attend to?
Did you ask for business? I'm having trouble hearing over here.
Yes. Do we have any business to attend to?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the resignation of Sarah Smith.
Have a motion.
Second.
And a second.
We hate to see her go. She's done an awesome job for this community. I mean, if you don't know all the stuff she's done, you really need to look into it. She's made that building over there her own, and it's, she's done an awesome job for us. So I'm really sorry to see her go, but I'm very excited for her.
Well said. All in favor? That is six-oh, Dottie. Any other business?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.